Act. And now it's being recorded. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature citizens, will not feature a citizen's comment period. For this meeting, Maynard School Committee is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the town website. And the school district website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating. By video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. And please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Additionally, please let the chair know if you were recording or broadcasting this meeting prior to doing so. Please raise your hand. You'll see a raise your hand thing at the bottom of the screen if you plan to broadcast. Or record this meeting. I do not see anyone raising their hand, so I'm going to assume that's not happening. Most of the supporting materials that have been provided for the members of this body. Are they available, Colleen? Were they posted with the agenda?
No, the um. Job descriptions were not posted with the agenda since we were still working on them.
Okay, alright. Um, meeting ground rules. I'm not going to read through this. We all know what the ground rules are, and this is going to be a quick conversation, I think. So. Roll call opening. Do I have a motion to open? Well, I'll just roll call open. Okay, here we go. Mary Granley.
Here.
Jessica Clark.
Here.
Natasha Rivera.
Here. Oh, yes, sorry.
Here. Yes, alright. We are ready. So tonight we are discussing the um. This, I believe there was a total of nine positions that were talked about. Eight were support staff. That would be funded by the Esser grant money coming to us um next year, and these positions would be to support. Um, students because of the um. Potential loss of of learning this year and and last. So we we need the positions to fill the gap. The other is because we will be receiving a large amount of grant money. We need a position that will track, manage, and oversee those funds to make sure they are spent appropriately. And um and utilized efficiently and and not. Lost or or not spent so that we have to return it. So. I'm going to turn it over to Brian now. Um. Unless you would like me to go into what I learned today from Dorothy.
You're welcome to share that first if you want.
Okay. So there was some question over whether or not the school committee has um. Oversight of grant monies. And so I had a conversation with Dorothy today, and it turns out that we do. We are supposed to receive. The grant money. We're supposed to vote to accept the grant money. And there are a few other um. Regulations about how we should be dealing with the grant money. We also are um. Responsible for voting to approve how that grant money is spent, especially if it is going to entail creating more FTEs. And because, partially because that affects payroll and we oversee payroll, but also because there will be benefits. Involved in those additional. Positions and that affects the town. So. At this point, um, Brian certainly going to discuss the positions. I have. I'm working with Dorothy and her colleague Tracy Novick, who is the mask like. Know-it-all about SC budget responsibilities and whatnot. We are hopefully going to have a workshop next week where. We learn what is our responsibility, what isn't our responsibility? And make sure that we do everything properly going forward because there is so much misunderstanding around. What we should be doing. Now, with that said. It also means that Brian cannot advertise for any of those positions until we approve them. So. The discussion tonight needs to be around A, understanding what those positions entail. And approving the job descriptions if we do. And then also whether or not um one or more of those positions can be posted. I know that there is some urgency. In terms of the grant manager position. But that is something that we will all need to work through together. Because, and I understand that this is, you know. Uh, last minute news. Um. I certainly wasn't aware of a lot of this stuff, and I thank Natasha for bringing it to my attention and um. And I was very grateful that Dorothy was available to speak with me today. Because I really, I do want to make sure we do things properly. And I think we have learned over the past two years that there are many things. That have been done in a certain way in in the past that either. Wasn't done properly to begin with, or things have changed since, and we haven't kept up with the changes. And so I just want to make sure that we. You know. Get all our ducks in a row. So. Brian. Why don't you share with us um?
Sure.
What you wanted.
Yeah, well, so just. For background information, we have several positions already running that are being paid for out of Esser money. So we'll probably need to, once we figure out exactly what needs to be approved and. And whatnot by school committee. So for example, we have nurse and custodian and things because we've gotten Esser one and Esser two money. So we currently have positions funded through Esser money. Looking forward, we have sort of three big. Areas that will be funded through Esser money as well. One being the summer programming that we've talked about. Not just extend, not the extended year that we always do, but additional summer programming that we've. That we're working on putting together for students. That would be funded out of Esser money. But that's really not the main topic of conversation tonight, but given that the school committee can vote on that, that'll be another vote. Next week at the next meeting, once we get a little more information from Dorothy. The other position, one of the other topics or positions would be the grants. Uh, accounting specialist, which I think you have seen the job description. It's in the folder. And it's been vetted with Wayne. And it is right now, if you look, if you're interested and you were to look on, you know, the job site, School Spring, for example. There are several other districts advertising for the same position. For some of the reasons I think we talked about at one of our recent meetings, just with the additional grants coming forward and the amount of money that they're for. There's a high level of scrutiny from the D O R, the D O E, DESI, in terms of backend paperwork, if you will, around grants. So the grant writer accounting specialist has, you know, we. Created a job description that's pretty expansive. It's a term position at this point. So the main, the main, one of the main roles is really to make sure that we're getting all the account, the uh grants that are due to us. They're being accounted for in the proper way. We're distributing them in the proper way. And we use it to, you know, all of it to the best of our ability. And there are very specific things within the job. Functions, everything from. I mean, then. Which I guess I don't really need to read the job description to you. I think we've talked about it, but there's a variety of topics that are related to interview reporting. DESI requirements, D O E Ed Grants website. Monitoring. Open purchase orders, because as you get a grant, you'll buy things, and that's the purchase order system revolving accounts. Supporting. And so one of the things they will also do is because right now we basically have a business office of three. So we have a business manager, we have a payroll. And accounts receivable. So if the payroll person happens to be out of work for two weeks because they're sick, we have no backup. So this person will also be trained multi-level so that they can support um the business office as a whole. They do not, just for clarity sake, take. The responsibility of applying and writing for grants that currently Jennifer Godette does from her. She still does that. That's assistant superintendent level work, and and she does that. This support level is the behind the scenes. Tracking of the grants, recording of the grants, filling out the paperwork of, once we get it, how are we spending it? And documenting that. And there's, there will be a significant amount of documentation required, giving Esser one, Esser two, and especially Esser three, which. We don't have an exact amount yet. It ranges anywhere from. I think 1.2, and every now and then it bumps up to like 1.9, and it's just depending on which formula they're giving us this week. It's not consistent, but it's 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 a large sum of money that we'll need to track accordingly. So that's one of the positions that we as a district think that I recommend that we. Add as a term position, so we have money for for two or three years. And then. And I think I've mentioned this at a prior meeting, so in full disclosure, if we decide, hey, this position. Has allowed the business office to do substantially more work and create efficiencies um across the central office. It may be in the future, if we could afford it, something we keep, but right now, and when we post and when we hire, it's a term position. So the person knows that. I just want to do full disclosure here, no surprises. And obviously, our business manager has gone over the um functions and responsibilities of the job description. And adjusted accordingly to sort of fit the needs of the larger Esser grants, the smaller. State and federal grants in our particular business office area.
Alright, I'm going to go around. Mary, do you have any questions or comments?
I do. Um, thank you for that, Brian. Um, is, who is this person going to report to? Is it exclusively to Wayne or?
Yes.
Okay, alright. Um, and will they be working also with Chief Stowers as, because the previous grant, the COVID money, and this is totally different, right?
Well, no, that's all, no, it's a great question because there was the Preventative Cares Act, there was Esser one, there was Esser two. So if, I don't think this overlaps with the chief at all. The Cares Act, we're kind of done with that. If by some chance. It came back for horrible reasons, but if it did, and we had. Cares prevention monies, that grant would probably get tracked the same way, then yeah, I would see this person helping track that and be in touch with the chief.
Okay.
But not for the Esser one, two, or three.
Okay, alright. Um, and that my my next question, which I think you answered was. We can utilize them for more for outside the boundaries of the Esser grants, correct? Like you had said.
Yes.
So it's not, so if there is another need and they've got a downtime, it's not such that we have to just. Have them for that, that.
Great question. Yeah, that that's a great question, a great point, so that they're not strictly limited to supporting the grant. We'd really like them to be a little more. Well-rounded and be able to support the grants, but support the business office, the accounts receivable, or the payroll. Because as I said, if we did have a problem, you know, if our payroll person were to fall ill, you know, God forbid, for a couple of weeks, we would, you know, that would be a problem for us.
Okay.
Because we literally have one person who does that.
Right, yeah, because that, so going back to what Natasha was mentioning last week about that Medicaid, the Medicaid reimbursement piece.
That could be part of it.
If we, yeah, might be able to incorporate that even, you know, it's helping the town, but it's ultimately helping all of us. And I just had. Just my, just a concern about qualifications that um a high school diploma. I guess I'd like to see it be more than that. It does say associate degree a plus, but we up the qualifications a little bit to.
I was thinking the same thing, Mary.
High school graduate.
Ditto.
Oh, I just feel like that's just not enough for the for the intensity.
Well, I, I. One thing I would say about that is that if like you went to a Vooc school, you would get all of this training and you wouldn't have a call. So like, I'm a huge proponent of not everybody needs to go to college to. Be successful. So I feel like a lot of the tasks, is that why that, I'm curious how they landed on a high school diploma? When I looked through, it looked like a lot of that were things you could learn. From a a Vooc school or a secretarial school, if they still exist, because it's a lot of like Excel.
Oh, it's something different, but yes.
Right, but so that's kind of where I came from in in terms of being okay with it saying high school diploma.
So I.
That's a good point.
Because we'll have a good vetting, I'm assuming, interview process that I wouldn't want to exclude someone who's gone through that. You know, Vooc school and is well qualified and, or or not even a Vooc school, but has had some some training outside of an actual associate's degree, but.
I think it's the opening, if you will, is the bare minimum. It's not what we're looking for, and it also allows us to put a salary out there that doesn't out price us. So if we were to say, for example, the minimum is a master's degree, well, now we're looking at somebody who has an MBA, and we're probably going to have to pay significantly more than we might want. Jessica's got some great explanations as well, which there could be somebody who doesn't have the formal educational experience, but has the skills. To do the job or learn the job quickly.
Yeah, I guess I was just looking, it said job requirements at the end, it says high school slash trade school degree preferred. So again, it it makes it sound like it's. I, because I agree with you, Jessica, if it's the trade school, then that's a whole different um element, but a traditional high school um concerns me a little bit, but that's just, you know, just.
I think it's inconsistently worded throughout. I think to your point, Mary, because earlier and above it says high school diploma. Slash associates, and then later on, the job requirements, I think is where it gets a little bit more vague in that regard, how I read it.
So. My other thought, and that too is outside of Vooc school, we might have someone. Who's near retirement, where they have a lot of training and are well-versed in a lot of these things, but. You know, if you're near retirement, you may not have gone to college, especially as a female back in the day. So. Where, especially where it's a term position potentially, we may not want to exclude those people either.
Absolutely. Alright, terrific. That's it. That was all my my comments or questions. Thank you.
Alright, Jessica.
Um, that you kind of had a leading um explanation there, Brian. I'm curious how the salary offered is in line with. Other um districts will be competing with, just because I, I feel like this is, I'm in full support of this role. I feel like. I had, I had a great business coach who always said, like, you need to delegate to elevate. And I feel like this is somewhere where we need some elevation in the community, even outside of Esser. We need to be tracking grants. Applying for more grants and not not applying for them just because we're at capacity with tracking and and managing them. So I hugely support this. I'm just curious if we're going to get um kind of pummeled by other districts who might be offering more? Or if this is in line with what um. A a reasonable salary is for someone in this this position. You're on mute.
Thanks. Um, we did look, and we're right in the middle of other districts that are about our size, surrounding districts that are about our size. We're right in there, um, right in the middle. But to your point there, I'm sure just because of where we're located, there will be positions from other. Or could be positions from other districts that may pay a little bit more, but I think we're right where we need to be.
Okay.
Are you good, Jess?
Yeah. Yeah, I might think of something else, but right now, I'm good. Thank you.
Natasha?
Um. One of the things that I, and I. For clarity, I appreciate that this is a need that we're trying to be proactive in addressing so that we are not losing money. For other, but the questions that I had were that when I looked at um. Other districts who are hiring a similar. Position, um, they are larger districts and they're hiring a one, a full-time FTE. And we are not that, as large as some of those. So Newton. Um, is hiring a finance and data analyst. Hudson, I can see some of the language there, you know, hiring a full-time FTE. So I just wanted to understand. Why we feel that being how smaller we are. That we still need the same administrative capacity that other districts who are larger. Feel that they they will need for this job. And two, I just am hesitant about relying on this job because it is a term position. For duties that will continue on beyond the funding of this job, because. Bringing that back. Is harder. Once you have someone in place, and I don't. I don't disagree having, we could probably have that person do a whole bunch of things, but I recognize that in three years. Or whenever we're we're having that conversation, um. You know, it's going to be very painful if the, if the school committee at that time does not agree to retain a full-time FTE. And we have this one person who's now a full-time FTE, and we can't. You know, can't ma, you know, maintain that on a long-term basis, or we we choose not to. Would we want to maybe? Look at maybe like a halftime? I just want to understand a little bit more because it has a lot of the day-to-day stuff that currently need to happen in this job description. That are not COVID-specific.
Oh, I think a lot of the districts you're talking about probably, and I could go check, um, have a business office significantly larger than ours. So one, you know, one of the issues I think we have is that we really have. Two people, you know, including the business manager Wayne, but there's like three people who manage accounts receivable, accounts payable, payroll. All the business um reporting, the budget subcommittee, the overall budget. And the current grants that we have, and they're they're taxed.
MSBA project too.
And an incoming MSBA project, which is, thank you. Um, you know, that's a big lift. There's just a lot, again, a lot of paper, behind-the-scenes paperwork that I think people don't know about and don't really think about. It's just like, oh, you write a grant, you get a grant. And it's just a checkbook that you have to check off and spend, and you're done. Unfortunately, it's a little, it's a lot more complicated than that at the back end because they do a lot of tracking. So in conversations with other districts with, you know, Wayne talking to other business managers, Wayne convincing me that this is really a need and really explaining it. Um, and then in working with Jennifer and having her explain, you know, what does she have to do in terms of? You know, we have very few people. So if we, you know, we look at the business side of that, or if we look at the educational side of that. We have an assistant superintendent. If we want to give the assistant superintendent, you know, the ability to focus on professional development, curriculum and instruction. Analyzing data, I mean, those all take time. So this position as a 1.0 allows the business office, the assistant superintendent. To really focus on their due diligence, their primary tasks, if you will. Um, and it allows us as a district to build capacity and move forward. Otherwise, we're kind of stuck on the wheel of just getting it done, but we never are building that capacity to move forward.
So I can just.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
No, 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 go ahead. I just wanted to to kind of. Engage that point a little bit more.
We'll stay on this one.
Yeah, so it sounds like what I'm hearing is that we envision that there's a need beyond COVID for this job, okay? Because that's what I'm hearing a lot more, that the business process or the functions in the district. Are are taxed, because some of the things you're 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 talking about how this role can support. Are to offset, so you know, in mentioning the assistant superintendent, being able to do focus on curriculum or. I I'm hoping that's already happening. I'm thinking that this job, that that is not contingent on this job, whether we have this job or not. That should be. You know, happening already. That's not something new for for this. Um, the the process for COVID funding. Is is to remediate, to help with COVID assist, COVID issues and. To understand, and I get Wayne is doing a lot with the MSBA. I I, that is certainly recognized. But I. I want to make sure that the function, I guess I'm just not entirely sold that we need a full-time FTE. For this, and I get the comply, I'm a compliance manager, so I get there's when you come to sponsor programs and federal funding. You know, there's a lot of checkboxes that you need to justify expenses and how you do that to remain compliant. You know, with regards to that. So I'm not, that's not lost on me at all. We don't have the expertise in-house to to do that. And I I agree. There is a need. I'm not necessarily in agreement that we need a full-time FTE. To do that um for our district, our size. Where the money could be spent potentially in other areas. When other districts, yes, they could have larger business departments, but that's not COVID-related. You know, you're trying to solve a non-COVID-related issue with COVID-related funding, and that part doesn't reconcile well with me. So if we want to build, maybe use this for COVID-specific matters, then I I'm wholeheartedly. In favor of. Looking at the job description and carving out the COVID-specific task that this person would be doing, or if we're looking to build in the revenue. Or like the Medicare, I don't see that part in here in the job description. But that would be something that this person would be tasked to help support. But the way I'm seeing it, it's not. It's not clear to me that this is not going to be relied on beyond COVID funding, and this is taking on tasks that need to be. Somehow, we have a lot, it's a more of a budgetary operating expense. Or issues, not COVID-related. I don't know. I mean, that's just my thought on on that. And I did look, you know, I I see that the, to Jessica's point, the 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 salary does seem in line with what I've seen um posted elsewhere, so that's not. You know, I I appreciate that that due diligence, that the the tasks are there. I didn't see the job description written as term either, so that was the other part too. It didn't have a. An end or um, you know, anticipation in the posting that it would not be. Permanent, so I don't know at what point that would happen. Would it be with a contract? When it's signed, it would be indicated that this would be um for like. Possibility of renewal after, I don't know, 12 months, I don't know, I just like some language there. I didn't see that in the job description, and that usually is. Helpful, you know, to hear, like to Jessica's point, you may have someone who's retired, who may be. A part-time job as a grandmother might actually be better, and they can maybe if they, if we have the need to work more hours, it might be a little bit. Here and there, but the assumption of doing a full-time. Might be a little bit overwhelming if it's someone who is not thinking that they have to take care of the grandkids or whatever. So I just. Just thinking about those pieces as well.
So those are great questions. Um, in all my conversations with Wayne, he's been pretty adamant that. If we can manage a full-time person, it will be extremely beneficial, given, and I think some of it is what we don't know. I mean, given the COVID grants, and there are a lot of them, and there's a lot of money coming. And I think we just don't know what all the tracking requirements will be and to whom it will be due and when, what the timeframe is. It seemed more responsible to say, let's go with a term position at a full-time position to have the person. Use them to the best of their ability to make sure we're hitting all the requirements for these grants. If in a year from now, we decide, you know what, we have this under control, this position could be reduced a little bit. That's. Nothing that locks us in for three years.
No, then you might lose a person who you've acclimated to do a process because you've advertised as a full-time FTE, and then you may have to cut back. I mean, that's the problem. That we have, you know, when we have to cut, you know, reduce staffing, you know? You know, it's it's easier to build up than it is to pull back. In that regard. So I think as we, you know, if we. I don't know, I I feel like I would prefer to put something more as either at least a halftime. I mean, that's, you know, it's $30,000, it's $60,000, so. Plus the benefits. I don't know what, you know, the benefit, how is that going to be? Is that something that's going to be coming out of the funding as well, or how is that going to be?
That's the town they handle that, and they know about these positions.
So the town, so that's the towns absorbing the benefits relating to a full-time FTE as well.
Yeah, they know. They've had conversations, Wayne and Lori have been in discussions about this.
There's 11 jobs that benefits that we would, you know, that. When I looked at the budget proposal for all the grant funding. And so I I think, I don't know, I think that a more conservative approach in in saying, let's, since we don't know. I think it's better to say, let's try with maybe, I don't know, 0.5.
I mean, I would defer to Wayne. To quite frankly, I mean, I'll make, and I hear you, and I can come back and try and give a better explanation with more specific details if that would be helpful.
I mean, I suggested last week about looking into the Medicare piece to offset some of, you know. And I didn't see that reflected in the job description in in some way, but I would. You know, I would say maybe you want to go back to that part and see what more this person can do to help. Put claims towards, you know, increasing those um medic, medic, um reimbursements as well.
So we can, yeah, we can look at that. I guess one of the questions is, if we start to include things like Medicaid and all these other things, then we're certainly not talking COVID anymore. Because we are.
No, but at least we're bringing in money in the in the interim. You know, if we stop doing it later on, there's no, technically. We're at least.
To your point, which I think you mentioned, you know, that's capacity from the school system, which is fine, but it's money that doesn't come back to the school system. Directly. It goes to the town.
Well, that's what we're, and but they're paying also the benefits, so I don't think it's unreasonable to say, hey, we do our part.
That, good point, and maybe that's why we need the full-time person, because they're going to be doing significantly more than just grants.
Alright, Jessica.
Just had a quick question in regards to. Like when we say we're a smaller district, we might not need someone full-time. It does it, the amount of paperwork and like follow-up and checkboxes you have to fill out are the same no matter what size district you are, correct?
Yes.
So it's not like because we're a smaller district, we're still going to have, be held to the same standard as. Newton North or whatnot. So I don't understand how our, I feel like the job will require the same amount of hours. As it would for a larger district, actually probably even more because we won't have that support staff to delegate tasks to. So we don't have like, you know, someone in the business office say like, hey, I got to get this done by five o'clock today. We're going to lose this money. Can you do X, Y, and Z? It's going to fall all on this person. Versus having the the like, again, going to Brian's point of capacity.
Well, but then it gets to the point of it's not just COVID related, you know, need, right? And we're talking about like the job. The the tasks that like were mentioned about being backup to people. You know, I'm guessing there has to be backup capacity now, like what that, I don't know what the business process is. But the district has gone this far without, you know, people could call out sick at any point. So we're building in a a resource. That is not specific only to COVID related tasks like grants, like you're talking about filling out paperwork. We're we're extending it beyond that. And that's the part that I was, you know, not certain of those tasks. Are, we're a smaller district than what a larger, you know, like warrants might be small. I don't know with this, all the things it's going to be doing, but those tasks are on a smaller scale. Payrolls.
Um, I have a question. So would it be possible to split the source of the salary? Between grant money and operational funds. And maybe the first year it's seventy-five percent grant money, twenty-five percent operational. The second is fifty fifty and then the third is twenty-five seventy-five. And that way, we're sort of slowly increasing it. If we see a need to retain that position. We're not slammed all at once with a hundred percent of the salary. Because I do think that if if we set this position up where they become part of the support staff, we are going to. I think we're going to see that not only was the position necessary, but that it's very helpful and that we are going to end up being more efficient and more effective. And. And have a a better ability to. To utilize our funds better, both for the town and for the district. And if it turns out that it's not necessary, then. You know, the grant goes away, so that part of the job is no longer funded and we still have someone who's part-time. If we need it. But I I I don't.
Talk with Wayne about that. That we hadn't talked about it that way. So it'll be a new conversation, but I'm absolutely happy to take that and have the conversation.
Can I ask a question of Jen, but at?
Sure. I'm going to mute so she can unmute because otherwise we get feedback.
Then, um, I know over the years, we've, we have cut various positions at the administration level. My my question is, do you say that this grant goes away? But do you feel that you are able to apply for all of the other grants that are out there? Or do you have the support staff? Do you feel like if you had more support staff, you'd be able to apply for other other grants?
Um, so speaking specifically about competitive grants, sorry, I'm just going to shut the door real quick. Speaking specifically about competitive grants, we apply for almost all of the ones that we are eligible for. The challenge becomes the demographic of our district. Is not generally the demographic of a district that is awarded the competitive grants. Additionally, there are things that we need to do. In order to get things like the skills capital grant. In order to create our innovation pathways if we want to try and receive funding in those ways that are very programmatic in nature. That we have to do before we're able to apply for those grants. So. You know, the application of the grants and the reason we don't get grants has much more to do with our demographic as a district and. Sort of i- in that capacity and I'm happy to go through that at some other time. But I think, you know, to to Brian's point, part of the management of all of the grants. You know, we do have, for example, one huge benefit of where we are is that the business office manages all of the time and effort sheets. Which we are required to do for anyone who is paid out of a grant. In my previous district, that fell on me. In my position. And so that is one example of an efficiency where we've put that and it, we didn't do it, it was here when I got here. That being said, when we are going to have a significant number more positions coming out of grants, that means we're going to be doubling. The number of time and effort sheets that we're going to have to be collecting and tracking and all of those sorts of things. So. You know, that could potentially be a shift where I may need to step in. To make sure that we're following up on that paperwork because I do all of the compliance in regards to the audits for the grants for Title One, et cetera. I would assume this would be. And so if I'm spending time there, I'm I'm again, not designing and working with the high school principal on innovation pathways. We're not working on. Ways in which we can improve our data processes to improve student learning. So. I I don't think it's a direct correlation, but I I echo everything that Brian's saying.
Thank you.
Brian, is there a way, I have a couple, I'm sorry, Lydia, is it okay if I? Okay, so just two other questions. One. Is, so is there any, I know that again, the town will be getting funding and and they don't have a grant. I guess, person, how is there an opportunity for a shared? Cost sharing position at all or just because?
I think that becomes problematic, don't you?
Well, no, actually I read that a lot of districts are doing, places are doing that, that have shared services. It's an efficiency. If the functions are administering the grants are not that much different. They have the same compliance need. I don't know if that would be. If that has been discussed, it sounds like maybe it hasn't. And then.
I can, so one of the challenges that I think would exist is that, and and it currently exists, is that the town. And the school, the software does not talk to each other. Not only, when I say it doesn't talk, they're completely different systems. So.
Yes, okay.
I think it would be a big challenge.
Thank you for that reminder. I totally forgot about that. And then the other. The other question would be. Is there, I guess, looking at the tasks of all the, are we reassessing all the, like. We're we're adding people, but like, are we looking at the task of all the jobs that what they're doing? And I know you've, you talked about like job descriptions in general. But I'm just, are we, do we have the right, are the people's roles exactly how we need them as our time has evolved? Is there been any change? I know a lot of places will reassess their job descriptions and say, okay, what is it? Do we have redundancies here? Do we have gaps that we're missing? You know, is that, is that a thing that maybe in the finance team, just in general? And just all these areas, you know, Jennifer, whatever that we we look at. We've changed models with, you know, principal, like all those things have really kind of evolved in the past couple of years. And I just feel like maybe. It might be a good opportunity to step back and be like, okay, what are, what are we asking each, what is the true job? Everyone's true job and what are the holes? That we have more of at a high level, macro level versus just trying to plug in a person where we think we need, but. Is there an expectation for someone else who should be doing something that maybe we're missing? And we're just filling it in with, you know, an FTE. In some capacity. So anyway, I don't think that's an answer you can give right now, but just, just, I would like to, you know, hear more about that process as well. And we're adding. Jobs into our district. How are we reassessing the ones we have? And and what the expectations are, their roles and are there tasks that need to be shifted to make things and reorganizations? I have no idea. I just.
So tailoring, tailoring it to our needs as our needs evolve.
Sure. And what, just so, maybe there's a little lack of clarity. It's more of an administrative assistant type position than an administrator position. Just in case there's. Not, you know, it's a new, it's new to us. So I think sometimes you can sort of interpret it the way you. You want, if you will, but just it's more of a support administrative assistant role, not on par with like a Wayne or a business. Okay. Just clarifying.
Okay.
So Lydia, I liked your idea also. Just wanted to add about the, looking at the funding, is there an opportunity to?
Thank you. Occasionally I have good ones.
That was good. I I actually, I I thought it was very creative and trying to see how, because I think that. That whenever it does fall off, that's hard to absorb, right? Whatever sixty plus. And I think that's the reality of anytime we add a position that's funded somewhere else. Do we do a good job of trying to incrementally absorb that in any way? And I, we probably could do better. I think. If there's that need for that, I just thought it would be, was creative, so.
Okay, um, so I'm, I'm sort of. In limbo as to where we should go to from here. I know that Brian would like to post. This position, but I also feel like the description itself may not be ready for us to vote on it at this point. Do others agree or concur with that?
I'm comfortable voting on it tonight and trusting that. And feedback.
I I second Mary. I'm nervous that we're going to miss out on good qualified people if we wait too long. Especially knowing other districts have already posted it. I feel like thi- this is going to, it's just going to be like a domino effect where district tester district is going to add this. So. I'd like to be ahead of the game.
Move forward tonight with it, then my suggestion is that. It gets posted. With the caveat. That it, the job itself might not change, but to make sure the person knows it's a term position. With the potential. Of maybe.
Renewing.
Renewing, long-term, and this. And there's still some details to be worked out, like they don't need to know where their salary funding is coming from. That's.
No, the Medicare or the Medicaid thing, I would like to see if that could be, you know, included or knowledge, you know, experience with. You know, whatever. I mean, so that we can at least ask for it and look for it or have someone. You know, whether we build that in or not, I think that would, I would like to see the effort tried there to explore that.
I knew you had mentioned this Medicaid thing before. Isn't it, haven't we not hired someone in the past because it's a full-time job? Well, so like, it requires a lot, right?
Be quiet, but there's a big return supposedly too. And this goes back to Dr. Girardi. He said that we're leaving money on the table. So the original idea was for us to to split it with the town, knowing that the town, it's ultimately going to the town, but it benefits everybody.
And there was a line on Medicaid reimbursement on the budget for the town. I I don't have that in front of me, but I can certainly circulate that. So they do.
I'm asking because I'm nervous if that is, it requires so much. I don't want it to take away from our ultimate goal. Having someone who's coming in to handle that Essers fund. And if we throw in Medicaid on top of that, are we creating a? A sixty hour, a full-time and a half.
Or do we phase it into a Medicaid? Like, do we phase it from the grant funding position into a Medicaid? Funny, because I remember Jeannie saying the same thing, like before she retired, just like, yeah, we're leaving a lot of money, but. There it's not anything she could handle because it, there was so much paperwork and.
Can't do it like half, it's not like, you could be like, oh, we'll just do it for this one. You either have to go all in or nothing. And from my understanding from the few meetings I attended. Well, before being on school committee, it was, we didn't do it because it was a full-time position.
I didn't understand it to be a full-time position, but I definitely know it took effort that people, you know, the bandwidth was certainly. No, not able. And I think, you know, I'm going to just, I think. Kind of Brian kind of mentioned a little bit, but I think to understand if it's not fully benefiting the district, I don't think the appetite to pursue it was. Genuinely, genuinely there as well because it is not only benefiting. The money doesn't retain in the school department's budget. And I think that is also my understanding of one of the reasons why it was kind of like, well. We're not benefiting from it, but we're paying the whole, whatever the position would be. So. I don't know.
Right. That's why the conversation was to split it. So maybe what we do is that. We keep that piece of it on the back burner because my my thinking is that this person is going to have a steep learning curve. Initially, and maybe that could be the second year, you know, of of, you know, if we find that that it's beneficial.
Yeah, the initial year contract with the, and I'll let them know that the second year, that contract is going to change. It's going to, it's going to morph a little bit.
But I think a job description should still look for someone who has, like, we, it wouldn't.
Oh, I agree. Absolutely.
That's what I'm saying, like in the job description, we still should. Add that in there as someone who maybe has, you know, experience with.
Do you think would negatively impact potential? Like if you have six of these job postings you're reviewing. And you're comparing to other districts where someone hasn't thrown that in the job description. Could it negatively impact someone applying? Or do you think that won't? I I have no idea.
They're all a little bit different, Jessica, when I was looking at them. So like the one in Newton is like a data analyst. Like they're all kind of like somewhat the same. There's some overlap, but none of them, none of them are exactly. The same in every expectation because their district needs are a little bit different. Like Hudson's was probably the closest we came. And I could tell. There was some language that we, you know, we looked at, but it wasn't even exactly the same there. So. I think it depends on what your candidate's looking for to do, you know, what their background is. Good thing it's all regional. So. Maybe you have someone who's.
My thought is just if we're coming from like a district where that was a full-time job, if they think, oh, my gosh, they're going to ask me to do, ask for. Keep saying it wrong, Esser funds. And this, it may negatively impact them. Applying because it seems like most districts who have it are using it. To the 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 fullest potential as more of a full-time versus just something that's. Mixed in unless I'm misinterpreting that. Maybe I'm thinking too deeply on it. I don't know.
You know, it's something that I will look into and just, and I'll talk with Wayne about that to see if it. And I think it probably depends. So this one, I think, would likely depend on the size of the district. In a, in a bigger district, it probably is a full-time job. Just knowing what you have to do even in a smaller district, you know, the more kids you have and the more adults you have servicing kids, there's more tracking involved. I think it's probably not necessarily a full-time job in Maynard, but it is definitely something that we can figure out how might that fit? And could it bring in money that goes to the town, which as we know, we're just one department. We happen to be the biggest department, but we're one department within the town. It would benefit us. In, I I guess you could say indirectly, but if it benefits the town, it benefits the schools. We're all in it together.
Exactly right. Thank you, Brian. Yeah.
Um, all right, then I. I will accept a motion at this point.
So I. I'll make a motion that we accept. Or we accept the recommendation for the. Accounts receivable. Grant position. With the understanding that the job description will be amended to include the feedback we provided regarding. Medicaid reimbursement. Term. Position. And that the funding source will be reevaluated in a future meeting. And decided upon at that time. So we'll be approving it, the funding source, however, based on your recommendation later.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Can I just ask for clarification, Natasha? What do you mean about the funding source? I mean, it's coming from Esser funds.
Discussion about the grant versus operational, the seventy-five, twenty-five, that thing.
Right, right, right. So so if there's an opportunity for us, you know, to see how you're. Not relying solely how that that part, so we're not totally relying on. Esther the whole time or I don't know, that part, it seems like, I want to get the job posted for them or let them do whatever they need to, but then the funding piece. We can maybe whatever, next meeting or the week after, we can. Figure that part out before the end of the year.
Yep. And you guys can discuss it at your next budget subcommittee meeting too.
Sure.
The other thing I just want to mention in in the discussion is just the comment that. That Mary made and Jessica and I both concurred with is making the qualifications consistent throughout the document, just so it's clear. All right. So if there's no further discussion, roll call, vote, Mary Branley?
Yes.
Jessica Clark?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
Lydia Clancy, yes. All right.
I just realized we didn't, Beth- Beth Lynn's thing, but anyway.
Oh, Beth Lynn Houlihan, absent.
Which, no, she had sent, um, anyway.
No, she, she-
It was just for us, it was just for us, okay, got it.
When I told her that we had new information, she asked me to withhold it.
Oh, okay, okay.
But, yeah. Yeah. Um, so I said, yeah, just save it for the twentieth, and then she can speak for herself, I don't need to read her statement.
I'm sure she'll be happy the job got-
Um, so in terms of the teachers and given the length of discussion that we had just about this one position, do we want to table the other eight positions? And once we know a little bit more about our responsibilities in terms of oversight and, and approval and whatnot, do we want to take this up at another time?
I don't know if it's helpful to give some high-level feedback, at least, um-
Okay.
That, I don't know, I mean, we don't necessarily, I, I agree, voting on it might not be necessary, but if at least we can provide some-
Just to get the ball rolling.
Yeah, you know, if that's helpful, some, just some, you know, observation. And then I don't know how that may be explained or factored into what is being, what might be shared further, and also just to understand what their timeline is for.
It can't hurt. Um, so do you want to start, Natasha?
Yeah, well, first, Brian, or, um, what is the timeline for getting the, these FTEs posted? For the MTSS support team members?
That can be a little, I mean, that can be a little bit later, we sort of have two separate ones, but related. So the summer school piece is a little more urgent time-wise. Um, so we would like to post those sooner rather than later. The MTSS positions, which are for next fall, we can have a general discussion today. Um, Jennifer can certainly explain it in probably more detail than I can, I can give you an overview. And then to, so that you understand a little bit better, and then if we can, you know, my preference would be, we would be able to say yes to the summer school positions, just in terms of posting to get that out there. And then if, on the twentieth, which is next week, we could have a vote on the MTSS support positions.
What are the summer school positions? I don't see anything except for the MTSS.
Yeah, I didn't either.
Yeah, so I don't know if there's, we have anything that we've reviewed for summer school positions that are separate from-
This was information that was provided, um, I think several school committee meetings ago in terms of how the grant funding was being used, um, that we were looking to provide summer programming, um, for our students. We have multiple different plans that are happening. Um, we have, um, a credit recovery program that is happening nine through twelve. Well, I suppose I shouldn't say it's happening, because if we can't fund it, then we can't, can't run it. Um, is, is happening nine through twelve, um, in order to provide a much more specific credit recovery or traditional credit recovery path for students who were unable to be successful. This is a follow-up to the very innovative and successful credit recovery program that the high school implemented with Esser funds this spring, um, which was incredibly successful in having students who were, um, not meeting expectations be able to, um, earn credit back, um, during this incredibly challenging time. We are collaborating with the Boys and Girls Club, um, to be able to provide enrichment stations during their summer programming. Um, this was, there, this is funded in two different ways. One is through the Esser funding, it was also funded through a collaborative grant that we wrote with the Boys and Girls Club, um, for seventy thousand dollars, um, to be able to improve, uh, excuse me, to enhance the programming by providing project-based enrichment activities, um, through their programming, so that we can, uh, just continue excitement around learning. Um, we are also running a six-through-twelve enrichment program, um, and, uh, one-through-twelve, um, back-to-school program at the end of the summer, um, that will allow for students to come in. Any student will be invited to come in, and there'll be different levels of programming, um, related to leadership skills for students who are the oldest in the grade, uh, related to transitions for students who are moving into new buildings or, or moving from fifth grade, for example, to sixth grade. Um, there are, and then social emotional supports and just sort of getting back into routines of school and making sure students are feeling comfortable coming back in the fall. Um, we are also running a K-through-five skill recovery program, um, for students who are showing deficits in literacy and math skills, um, where we are working to, um, design programming where our, the students will come in in small groups. They will use our curricular resources of Go Math and the two literacy programs that we're piloting. Um, and the teachers will work to use universal design principles to, um, address learner variability um, and help to preview material for these students and also help to build back some of their skills. Um, so we have a variety of programming that we are working on designing, um, for the summer. Um, we are using Esser funding, um, for both the development of these programs so that staff are involved in the programs that they will be running, and then also for compensation of staff when they are, um, running the program. So that, those are the summer-
Could I ask a question, Jennifer? Yeah, I think I remember when we, when we were talking about this, I think we were supposed to get like a presentation of like what the framework of that's the summer programmings, the academies that you're talking about would, would look like. Um, I don't, I don't remember have, um, if we've received anything like that of what that, because that's, those are, it sounds like a lot of FTEs are expanding-
Well, most of them are stipend position, well, essentially, it's not, it's not a full-time FTE, but it is funding that will go into payroll, um, for teachers and paraprofessionals to run our summer programming, which we do traditionally for the extended school year for special education students. Um, so it's really looking to expand our programming over the summer for all of our students. Um, in terms of the, the presentation of the structure, um, one of the things that, um, I wanted to do and making sure that we're moving this forward is we invite the staff who'll be participating in these programs who have been working with the students to help design them, um, which is part of why, you know, we need to have that programming piece. So, um, we have already put a posting forward for staff to do some of that design. Um, and we are beginning to work on that, and if that's something that we need to pull back, then that's something we need to know immediately because we have meetings that are already established.
Have you, um, done any outreach or, or, um, asked parents if they're on, like, do you know what the expectation is for the number of kids who would sign up for this? Just because I know, like, camp registration has already started and vacations planned. And if parents aren't aware of this yet, like, will we even have enough kids who show up for it?
The Boys and Girls Club program is running their sign-ups in the same ways that they are, we're promoting it through our, um, newsletters as well. Um, but, and they are usually at capacity for most of their programming. Um, we're excited that with this grant that we wrote collaboratively, we will be able to increase their staffing and potentially increase the number of students who have access to that programming, um, for the K-to-five skill and a skill recovery and the nine-through-twelve credit recovery. Those are invitation, um, components where we are going to be targeting specific students, um, inviting students in for that. Um, for the nine-through-twelve, or sorry, the six-through-twelve enrichment programming and the transition back to school. Um, we have reached out to families, particularly at the secondary level, to identify what kinds of program they would be interested in, um, and they are working to design, um, you know, sort of mini camps, if you will, around certain themes, um, that would be, um, that were of interest to students and to families. Um, we did look at that data to identify that the best time to do that enrichment would be the couple of weeks, excuse me, prior to the return to school, and that was from that information provided in that survey. Additionally, if we're looking at a transition back to school, it makes sense to do it in, uh, you know, close proximity to, um, students coming back.
So most of this will be happening then in August, right? Most of the-
Um, so the summer, Boys and Girls Summer Program starts, I believe, the last week in June. Um, our enrichment component may be a week later, um, in terms of that, depending on how, you know, we're still working out some of those nuanced details of that piece. Um, the credit recovery and the, um, K-to-five skill component will model the, um, extended school year for, um, our special education students that we are always run, and that will be happening. Um, I believe it's for three weeks or four weeks in July. Um, and then again, the enrichment piece will be happening at the end of school prior to the, um, or, sorry, beginning of school, just prior to that starting.
And you, you feel like you're getting enough, um, teacher, staff support, that, um, teachers that are gonna have the bandwidth to, uh, to do this after the year that they've had?
That's one of the concerns that we have, and particularly one of the reasons why it was so important to have them be able to be involved in the planning process so that they are able to, um, you know, create, so it's not, I'm not creating a program in isolation, we're creating it so that they can see, you know what, I can commit to coming in a few hours a day um, for our K-to-five programming, particularly for literacy, we have, because we are going to be doing the pilots in literacy next year. We do have some staff who are excited to be able to utilize that, those programs ahead of time. Um, and, you know, in terms of the sign-ups of the people, I think there's a lot of folks, um, you know, some of our paraprofessionals, for example, um, who are looking to continue working over the summer, um, in a variety of ways. Am I confident that we will have the numbers, um, to run our programming? Yes. Would we like to be able to invite more students, probably? Um, and we'll just, we need to make sure that we can maintain the small group size to really be efficient.
If we wait till next week, is that too late?
I mean, so I already have, um, or we already have multiple teams that are moving forward. Um, and so I, I guess it would be more of a matter, I, I guess if it doesn't happen, we'll need to figure out how we compensate people for the work that's already been done and then go forward from there. Um-
And I don't think it's more of that not approving, I just think that we just more context and understanding of what it is that we're approving and how that's, you know, like in a more, from not just processing what you're saying right now in the moment, I kind of like, like to read it thoroughly, process it, understand it, be prepared to ask maybe more thoughtful questions on it. Um, not in just ten minutes.
Yeah, I'll, I'd also love to hear more if you think, uh, you just said something along the lines of like, we won't be able to invite all kids back who might want to join it. I want to hear more about that and how we might be able to, um, fill that lack of capacity if we need to go outside of school to find additional teachers, to make sure that we're really providing, using these funds to service all children who want access to them. So, um, anything we can do to help with that aspect, I would love to know, um, what we can do.
I hate to hear that we're turning, we have to turn someone away if there is appetite for it, and stuff like that.
Definitely.
Jen, do you recall which meeting you first spoke about this?
I don't, I, I don't.
Okay.
I know in the subcommittee-
Of the MTSS positions, although it's something that we can wait on. Again, these are positions that we want to hit the ground running for. So if, if we're hiring in many of these MTSS positions for the, and the same thing for the summer programs is we want our staff to be involved in this, you know, we want to identify some of our staff that are highly skilled at using data to help students to move forward, um, which means that we need to, they need to know that these positions are there. They need to know, um, that they can apply for them so that they can begin to form a sense of what this is going to look like. Um, and additionally, if we are identifying some of our classroom teachers who may want to step into these, um, more leadership teaching positions, um, we will need to fill those positions. And so, you know, I understand, um, I understand that we received some, some different information than what we had had previously. Um, but, you know, a- all of this is, is taking time, um, in terms of the, the programming and developing and supporting the students in the way, um, that, that students will be coming back in, um, into school and, and be able to support them. So, um, you know, certainly happy to have, you know, Ms. Presser be able to provide the information. Um, but it, it is very time-sensitive, um, and there's a lot of steps that we need to take to make sure that all of these things are successful. Um, and the longer we delay, the harder those steps become.
Got it, message received, urgent, I think everyone understands that, I appreciate you reiterating that. I did have some, um, just high-level feedback regarding, since, just to make sure, some takeaway, um, which I think we talked about sharing, um, the MTSS support. Um, so it looked like just some of the information in the job description, um, indicated about knowledge of evidence-based, but I think experience is more, I would, I don't know, I'd hope that that would be more of a, the prominent piece that we're looking for is just experience implementing, um, not just knowledge. Um, experience with multi-tiered systems, not just, again, knowledge of that, um, the other part too with multi, I was, when I was reading through the job description and that this might be helpful just to understand, like, what your vision is, um, in implementing this. Um, there wasn't, even though it's multi-tiered, so I'm guessing, you know, tier, 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 three, there, there wasn't a lot of, like, special education piece in here or, or, or seeking someone who had experience with special education. If you're looking that they could potentially be co-teaching with a prince, uh, another teacher, dental ed teacher, and I just wanted to get your understanding on, on that component a little bit. Um, would it be someone who does have, so you're looking for someone who has special education, who'd be doing push-in?
So this isn't designed to be special education-specific, rather, it's designed to look at all of our students um, and be sure that we are able to help all students move forward, um, on essential content and skills. Um, and so there are, are certainly folks with special education certification and experience that have skills in data-informed decision-making and implementation of learning plans and so on. Um, there are also student, or I'm sorry, um, staff and teachers who would not have that special education certification or experience, but do have those skills as well. Um, so this isn't designed to be, and it's not necessarily a tier-two or a tier-three. It really is looking at, you know, what does the data show about all of our students? Um, facilitating and assisting with teacher leaders in, um, facilitating those data conversations as team, identifying for the entire grade level which students are at which, um, proficiency level, and then designing instruction to be able to help move students on that proficiency scale, some of which may be direct instruction by going into classrooms and providing a small group lesson in a station rotation. Um, and that small group lesson may be targeted to specific students, um, but it is not designed as a separate, um, you know, a, a specialized instructional component. Um, this is really the, the model that we want to have in our classrooms at all times, and the concept is really to take advantage of the fact that we have an opportunity, um, with these funds to be able to hire additional staff, adi- additional people, um, to allow for the team of teachers that will remain with us after these funds go away, to develop skills in data-informed, um, decision-making and helping students move towards plans. So it's, it's a little different than just, um, sort of looking at one particular student or, or one set of students.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate, I wasn't thinking that it would be only special education, I just thought it would be important, maybe if we're looking at multi-tiered, um, that's the part I was trying to connect that piece, if they're not doing tier-two and tier-three, which is more special education and we're getting into that area, that's the part I was a little bit confused about. Um, or if they were co-teaching with a classroom teacher, would that be someone we would be looking for, would we have to general education, like, this would be like a general, not, we would not want someone who would have that more or maybe experienced-
You could have a co-teacher in a classroom with someone who has, and it wouldn't necessarily be a full-time co-teacher. It may be that I co-teach a lesson or I co-teach a set of lessons because I have an expertise in how to address learner variability in regards to literacy. And that's my knowledge base that I'm able to share in a job-embedded professional development way with, with staff. When we've spoken about intervention and, and support, you know, this has certainly been a conversation at the elementary level for, for years since I've been here about how we need more staff to support, um, student learning. And, um, what the staff say is that they want people to be able to be in their classroom with them, either to show them how to do the work, to model the work or model the instruction, or to work with the students. And so it was really designed in that way. Um, I do also want to address that this is not a K-five, um, or elementary model only. This, these positions would be, um, to work throughout the district. Um, so for example, in speaking with the guidance counseling staff about what are the ways that we can support our students better, understanding that they're gonna be coming in, um, with additional challenges related to social emotional supports. Um, one of the things that the guidance staff identified, they're doing a lot of right now is really a social worker component where they're identifying resources and, and getting families hooked up with resources that really would be, for example, an actin, that's a town-level position, um, for the town social worker. Um, and so the concept may be that for that position, we hire someone who is a social worker, um, that is able to work with the families, thereby freeing up our guidance staff to be able to do more direct instruction with our students. Um, so this really needs to be a flexible team to be able to meet the needs, um, throughout the district.
Do you have, are you indicating, um, because they're not, they're not, what if you get a whole bunch of like math experts or applying for this? Do we have a certain amount of like criteria of how many for literacy, how many like we're, we're hoping to fit the needs of what we're looking for in our, our job? Do we want to indicate that in the job descriptions per se, like specialized literacy, you know? So we're making sure we're getting the, the, the road more, I don't know if I'm making sense, but like a whole bunch of one specialty and, and not a lot of the other?
So that would be through the hiring process, um, and basically what we were hoping to do frankly is to begin to have conversations with some of our teachers currently, who we think would fit well into these roles so that they could help to really identify how this would function, it's going to be a significant change. really identify how this would function. It's going to be a significant change from the way our teacher leader and common planning meetings have occurred before. So it's going to need to be staff who are able to work collaboratively with the grade level teams. Um, and so that, again, as I said, we had the conversation with the, um, guidance and adjustment counselors and school psychologists to identify what is the need in your area? And we were going to be doing the same thing with the teacher leaders in the other areas as well.
How does that work with the term position though? If you have current staff, these are term positions, the funding is uh, and if would they, after the, the role, it would be, that's it? They would have to apply for an open position later?
No, they would go back into the position that they had. So if we were to transition someone out of the classroom, the person who was hired for that would be a temporary one-year position or two-year position. Usually you do a one-year and then you do a, another one-year. Um, and then that position ends and the teacher would go back into the classroom. There are some of our staff that are that I've sort of had very, very high-level conversations about this concept with that may be close to retirement. Um, and they're sort of interested in making a transition for a year or two.
Okay.
But yep, we would, they would be, um, the, and again, the complete intention is that we should not need this level of intervention and support in any normal time. We are anticipating that we need it. We will need it because we have a segment of our students who we have not seen. Um, and I'm not just talking about remote students. We have students who have been homeschooled for the year that are coming back. We have students that are remote that we don't have our common assessment data on because you can't give it in a remote way. Um, and we do, we are seeing some social emotional challenges as students are transitioning back. Beyond that, however, we know that we need to address and be better at addressing learner variability for all of our students. And so this is really intended to be a year or two of intensive job-embedded professional learning where we as a system, so you mentioned Natasha, that the MTSS position wouldn't be providing tier two or three. These people are simply members of a team, which would include special education, it would include Title I staff, it would include our BBST and our, and our, um, case management meetings. And so the intention of an MTSS, which is a multi-tiered system of support, is that you have very explicit and intentional ways, um, of addressing all student need. And so while these individuals specifically may not be providing a tier-three pullout instruction, they will be involved in the conversation, um, to identify if a student or a group of students would need that level of service and 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 be able to to help move in that direction.
Jennifer, do these positions, who, who would they report to?
Would that be? Yep, they would report to the principal of the building, um, and then in, they would not report to me, but in terms of the way we really see it working is that the principals, particularly of curriculum instruction and assessment. When we have our meetings, um, we generally meet weekly or every other week that the data analysis is part that's being referred up. So we're having that conversation and then it's being filtered down.
Okay, all right. Thank you. One question, I know that, um, just again, going back to making sure whoever we're hiring can service all kids. I remember there was some reason that if a child, like if a child's on an IP, they can't receive Title I services. Is that the same with these? Like this will be different?
So a- any service, um, is that just because a student is on an IP does not mean that they can't receive Title I or EL or other services. We are required to evaluate all of our students and all of our services to provide, um, where they need that. And so this would be no different than that.
Well, no, like there's some reason that they can't like, so for example, my daughter was in Title I, she had a great relationship with the Title I teacher. As soon as she was put on the IP, could no longer work with, continue to work with that.
I'm gonna need to get out.
I'm like.
Go on out.
There was some, and why I don't remember exactly.
Go ahead.
So I'm just, I just want to make sure that that's not the case with these, if we're hiring all these new people, that all children will have access to them and it won't create this like, oh, sorry, you now have to switch or don't qualify for this and need to. You know what I mean?
I don't know your daughter's specific situation. There are, what we can't do, and this is maybe where that occurred, is that we can't not provide special education services because they are receiving other services. And so it may have been in that realm. Um, I don't, again, I don't know, but the intention here is very much that it is, it is for all students and they, that these people are part of really designing and implementing with us an MTSS structure that we hope will last beyond the two years, one or two years, depending on how we see this, this unfolding. Because it's a structure that we need to create for our students. We've needed to do it for a long time. And this is an opportunity for us to use funds to artificially increase our staffing, to provide time and provide learning for our staff to be able to then do this better once, um, once the, the crisis, if you will, goes away.
Um, and then just one more quick question to loop back to the summer school stuff. Will the, where we're using the grant at Boys and Girls Club, will that then make it free for children to attend?
So we are not able to use that particular grant, um, in order to, um, pay for, based on the rules of how that grant was written. Um, we can't use it for student tuitions. That being said, one of the conversations that we had with the ESTR funds is that if there is a need, or for example, if as a group we identify that students need, they don't need to come in for the math skills. They really need, you know, that, that involvement, that interaction that the ESTR funds could potentially be able to compensate for that. So that is a conversation. I also do know just for folks who are listening that the Boys and Club, Boys and Girls Club works incredibly hard, um, to, to provide tuition assistance. Um, and one of the reasons that, you know, when we worked with Annalisa, who is the executive director, because we have this grant funding and we're able to increase staffing in some ways, it frees up some of their resources to be able to do some of that.
Okay, I just want to make sure kids have access if they want it or or need it.
Yeah, and I, again, I know they work incredibly hard to make sure that, that kids can come. I think the capacity issue for them over the summer programming, my understanding has been staffing. Just being able to identify staffing in spaces. We are also having them utilize a significant, a significantly larger portion of our high school this year. So that potentially that can allow for some increased, again, spaces and staffing.
Thank you.
I know just, um, that Annalisa had given me, um, forms to pass out at the food pantry and she wanted me to make sure that everybody knew that, um, that there are definitely scholarships available for the kids that need them. So they, they do work really hard to make sure that everybody that wants to can participate.
Can we get something, could we get those forms into the schools potentially for, for teachers to have access to as well? If they have a child they may have identified that doesn't attend the food pantry or whatnot.
I can ask her. We, we have a meeting on Monday.
Yeah, I can ask her, yeah. My hunch is that she's probably doing that, but, um, yeah, I just, um, in general, I look at kind of as this is a blessing in disguise because to your point, Jennifer, it's an opportunity, you know, it started with a catastrophe, um, to be able to move our school system forward using funds that we do not have available. So, um, I think we can make a lot of, a lot of good decisions and really help every single kid from now going forward. So.
Um, which leads me to, it, have we thought about being really diligent about tracking the data and correlation in order to prove a point later down the line, once these funds are gone? Just to make sure that, because it's, it's something we've always voiced as a community, I feel, especially school committee and administration, that if we had these funds, we could do X, Y, and Z. So to now actually have them and be able to put the proof back out there at the end, like have we, I just want to make sure we're taking that.
Um, so I think where we're doing that frankly probably has more to do with potentially the summer programming. It may have more to do with the custodial position, the nurse position, um, and those sorts of things for those are the positions that, or the programs that we have, you know, um, looked at to say, this has been a need and identified as a need in previous budget years. And so while we can fund it currently through grant funding, over the next several years, we need to be thinking about how we bring these, these, um, pieces into the operating budget. I think for the MTSS team, certainly what we have talked a lot about, um, as an administrative team is really again, utilizing these positions in order to create a data culture where we're, we're constantly looking at student data um, and using that data to inform flexible groupings and inform instruction, um, and to be able to show that. We certainly, you know, one of the things that I have said, um, as I've talked about this with different, this, this concept with different groups is that the intention here is that these are, are temporary positions. And so we should not expect that at the end of two years, we will have an additional eight FTE in this capacity. Now, there have been those who have said, well, maybe we always needed that additional, um, staffing. I think what we would want to look at and do, um, and I disagree in some extent and and having looked at, you know, I think I think there may be places where we can, I mean, more like, can we zero in and really like track data in certain aspects of these FTEs to show like, hey, look at, we really look at this improvement and we really did need this and look at how successful it was. Not, I don't think we're, I mean, obviously we're not going to stay in COVID times forever. Right. And I think that's more, that's more of the message is that, you know, we are, we are going to see an increased need because we have had students whose, whose schooling has been interrupted. We should just anticipate that. In normal times, we are going to have students who have need. What is the right balance? Um, and and so, yes, we can absolutely begin to look and identify. I just wanted to be very clear with the staff, um, about, you know, sort of like, let's, let's not get over-reliant that other people can do this work. It really is about us learning how we can do it and take advantage of some of our really highly skilled teachers to help do some training and again, job-embedded professional development. But to your point, might there be a position or two that would really be beneficial, um, to move forward? The, the social worker is, I think, a great example of one where, um, as we were talking about this, we have a lot of new faces on that team. Um, and they, they mentioned that really that i- in towns, that is, that is a function, that is a position where the town has a position to provide that level of support. Um, and so it just sort of was an interesting conversation about, okay, so there's, there's a, there is a gap. What is the best way for us as a town and mayor to be able to provide that? Um, so yes, there are absolutely places where we can look to see what makes sense.
Yeah, do we, should we vote on, I just realized the LPN and the custodian, I think those are probably more non-controversial grant funding.
I just want to ask one question about these first. What is the salary range for each position?
Um, so because we are anticipating, so basically the way it comes in, you, you know, it would be, um, the salary scale. You can anticipate that for these types of positions, you're looking at something much closer to an instructional coach. So you need years of experience, et cetera. So you're up into the seventies or eighties. That being said, what we're hoping to do, as I said, is identify our staff that are already higher than that, um, and then be able to potentially, um, hire at the level that we normally do when we budget, you know, so where, where we figured out the funding is we use sixty-six thousand, which is what we do per position, um, for teacher salaries. For that.
Okay. All right. Um, any other questions about this?
No, it just sounds like it, um, it's more, so it's not really intervention, like as doing push-in for these roles or actually more consulting, working with our our own s- s- staff with professional development. And so that, that seemed, sounded a little bit different than what maybe what we had heard before.
This is definitely different than my, my.
Yeah. I think we had heard more push-in expectation in the classroom, um, which is, again, it sounds, what you're, I'm not negating like the need for it. It just, conceptually, it sounds like there've been some evolution to it to reassess, you know, how we want to do it and what we, what we've heard.
So I, I, just to, um, clarify a bit, there, there is work that will be done outside of the classroom in terms of learning. However, the professional development component really is, as I, as I mentioned, we've spoken with teachers about sort of talking about consultants coming in and things of that nature and and improving student learning. And where they said the need is, is in the classroom space. Um, so either come model it for me and show me how to do it so that I can learn. Or again, do the co-teaching. Um, and there is a very intentional aspect of this where they will be providing direct service to students, um, in the classroom setting. So whether that be a flexible grouping model where, you know, there's five classroom teachers and then one or two of this MTSS team so that we can have seven groups. Or one of the people goes into, um, the first grade classrooms, for example, over the course of, of several weeks and leads, um, a, a teacher-directed station while the classroom teacher is also leading a teacher-directed station. So it's all of those pieces combined, um, into one.
But they're not going to be special education necessarily. So they're not gonna, so they're not going to be actually doing cer- you said services, that just kind of piqued my, they're not actually providing services in the sense of special education because they're not going to be special education teachers.
The intention is that they are not meeting, um, the IEP minute requirements, if you will.
Okay.
For pull-out services.
Okay, that's what I was kind of wanting to clear because it, it kind of, when you get to services, then I would want to see more special education language in the in the job description and, you know, conferring with the director of student services or the team chairs and whatnot. I didn't see any of that in what was provided.
Yep, so, um, Mr. Ferrante has, um, seen the job description and he's provided feedback on it. And I will bring that to him to make sure that there's clarity around what he believes or how he believes these will function.
I think it'd be helpful. I mean, I know, I believe that there will be kids who are identified, you know, and that if there's flexibility that they could be special ed also to help, you know, alleviate some of that, you know, whether it's services here and there for smaller groups. I'm, but I just want to make sure if they're not special education certified, that, that we're not relying on them to provide services in that case.
Okay, so, um, I think, I think we're agreed that we aren't going to vote on these positions tonight. Correct?
Yeah, I think we just need a little more framework on.
Okay, um, and Brian, does the twentieth work in terms of discussion around this? Or do you want to discuss earlier than that?
No, no, because that's next Thursday.
Okay, all right.
The summer positions though, weren't, weren't those more time-sensitive, I thought?
Yes.
I don't think we had any, we, we just heard about.
Yeah, we don't have any materials though on the summer positions.
Okay, so next week, next week, we can vote on that also.
Is that okay? Are we going to be ready to, is that, is that something, Jennifer, Brian, that we will have information for to be able to vote for next week for those positions? Or the programs that you're, that you're talking about, Academy and?
What additional, what additional information do we need? Just a, a better understanding of what all of the things that, that Jennifer outlines, like what is the six to twelve enrichment program going to look like? I mean, I guess.
Like how many FTEs, like what are the actual positions that they're looking for? They're paraprofessionals, teachers, I'm like, they're paying stipends mostly. So like, you know, what does that look like?
Right, just.
Right, yeah. I mean, I, it sounds like she, she's speaking to us. I'm guessing it's probably available, just I'd like to have time to review it and understand it before I would approve something that I haven't seen. So should, can we maybe, are we okay with, if we make a motion to approve the LPN and the custodian? I don't. Okay, so.
To motion.
Yep. All right, so I'll make a motion that we approve the, um, the one FTE for the LPN and the custodian, uh, for use for, in a term position. Using the ESTR funds, as has been recommended.
I second that in seconds.
Okay, discussion. All right, roll call vote. Uh, Jessica Clark.
Yes.
Mary Branley.
Yes.
Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Lydia Clancy. Yes, okay.
The literacy consultant, I'd also want to hear at some point what that, like how you envisioned that one to be part of this conversation as well. So we can vote on that one. I'm guessing that's more pressing.
I was going to bring that, that's, yeah, I was going to bring that up also. So if we could see it at the same time.
Yep.
Okay, so. Um, Brian and Jennifer, are you clear on what it is that we require in order to get done, what needs to get done?
I believe so. I think you want job descriptions in a little more detail about the programming for those two, for the literacy consultant and the MTSS roles and the summer school roles.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else? All right, I will, uh, accept a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Mary Branley.
Yes.
Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Jessica Clark.
Yes.
Lydia Clancy. Yes. All right, thank. All right, thank you very much, thank you Brian and Jennifer for all of your explanations.